Thank you sir.
Thank you. The Life Divine Payalvatharkaha, Nammanayivareyum inneerathil Onrukoda sayidu Indha Vaayikani namakkhu eerpadutikkoodathulla Bhavavankum Sriannayakkum Namadu Nanriyayum Vanakkathayum Avarkaladu Porpaadangali Samarpipoom Indha nam Sindiyakum ovor Yenathayum Pesham ovor vaathayum Avargalakkhu Kaanikyaaga samarpipoom Anivarekku Maalay vanakkam Number Life Divine la chapter 19 pathtrukkam life adu pathtrukkam Phone session varikkam Paragraph 17 adu varikkam pathtrukkam Indha session lavanthu indha kadaesi irundu paragraph 18 and 19 pakla number Ippa enna paththo ambringartha oru Briefa number recall pannikila Indha life Enbathu wa Oru Prabhanjasakti Adu vandhu oru Seyalat oru Seyalbadum oru iyyakkamaga indha prabhanjathil amindhulladu Adu thanindha vadivangal uruvangal avatrai Podippeethalum ariththalamaga adanode seyalbadha amindhulladu Adu than vaarvin iyyakkam Adhalal indha Maranathakkum vaarvikkum idaili Eerpadum oru Moranaanu nilai enbathu namrodiyam manadin oru pyraj Indha sakthi than Adippadai vaarvin adippadai amsam Adanodeyindha material aspect Material aspect vandhu Andha Velil amindhulladu andha sadatthanmai Adu vandhu adanodeyavellipurai iyyakkam Vaarvu enbadanodey adippadai amsam eduvanral Indha sakthi than vaarvin adippadai amsam Indha vaarvu enbathu Bhavan enna koorikindara enral Oru sakthi enrakoorikindara Anal naam avaru arindhrakavillai Nam Indha vaarvin oru kurippetta vilayvai thaanam vaarvu enra arindhullum Mochi vidudhal Edam mittu edam Nagarudhal idaita naam Vaarvu enr Nenithullum anal vaarvu enbathu oru sakthi Adhalal Indha vaarvu enbathu vilangukal manidhan Taavarianangal ivaygalidam maathiram kaanappaduvathu illai Sadapurulil ulohangalilum Kakkalilum Vaayu gas avaygalilum poda vaarvu enbathu kaanappadikindradu Enanral vaarvu enbathu oru sakthi adippadai Indha ulohangalil vaarvin Ulohangalil vaarvin Vaarvu kaanappaduvathu enbathu Adarkana nirupanangal vandhu Oru mihundha alavil namakkhu ketavillai Irundhalum Adainam maruthivada mudiyadu Sariyana ubhagranangal namakkhu amindhal Ulohangalilum vaarvu irukindradu enbadu nirupanam seyya mudiyam Adheeponru Bhavan Innuro karthai mukkemana karthai koorikindara ennavanral Indha Physical response to stimulus Velilirundu oru thindudal Adarkana oru yedursayal oru yedursayal oru yedursayal oru yedursayal Idai maathiramaittukondee naam vaarvin Purarikuri adai maathiramay naam vaarvin oru puraari puraarihuri outward sign Enrmaathram naam muddivukka vara kodadu Enanral indha Mochi vidudhal indha edampayardhal Iveygalithaan naam vaarvin arihurigilaga karthikindaro Anal Bhavan enna koorikindara enral Iveygalallam taavarianangalidam kaanappaduvathu illai Illavidinam avaygal thotrandu tanodiy Soon naligalku takundavaar avaygal Andha adarkana oru yedursayal oru yedursayal response Adaisayidukundu than sariyanum marail irukindranay enrubhavan koorikindara Adhalal indha vaarvin iyyakkam enbathu Naam kaanakkoodiya andha puraarihurikari kaanappadaa vidinam Vaarvu enginra andha amaypuy andha seyalbadhu Anayuthu thalaktilum Ulladu enrubhavan kooripadikindara Indha prabhanjathil Indha sakthi adu vandhu oru seyalbadum oru dynamic energy Oru seyalbadum sakthiaga indha prabhanjathil ulladu Adu vevvairu vadivangali Stoolavadivathil irundu sushma vadivangal varai adu thangukindradu Indha vadivangal vandhu oru jadapurulaga irkalam aladu oru thaavaramaga irkalam aladu oru Vilangiramaga irkalam ulohangala irkalam manidhanaga irkalam Ivey anaythilimay indha oray indha dynamic force oru seyalbadum sakthi adu than vandhu Thakeyvaykappattulladu Adummaathram illa adu oru activeaum angirukindradu Andha sakthi vandhu oru seyalbadum nireyl activeaum thodipaum Anayuthu vadivangalilum irukindradu The vedilulandha prabhanjathilulandha seyalbadum sakthikkum Ullirikkum andha thakeyvaykappattunnelailirikkum andha sakthikkum Idail parimaaatram thotrandu nagarundukondee irukindradu Indha parimaaatratthaita parimaaatratthaita naam vaarvu enr adakkindaro Vaarvu vaarvin sakthi enr naam adakkindaro Indha life force Vaarvin sakthi Idu than vandhu indha nam udalil Indha vaarvu enginra indha iyyakthayum Andha sakthiyayum adu than paramarikindradu Indha meerpuramaga Namrodiyavudal Oru Seyalatra nireyl vaarvatra nireyl kaanappattalam kodha indha life force The prana sakthi Muthrilum oru thanul anayuthu Sakthigalayum kondanileyl irukindradu enrubhavan kooripadikindara Adhalal Oru kurippetta ellai kul Maranamattru oruvarakoda namal oyitpickamudiyam enrubhavan kooripadikindara Indha life force adu enna sayikindradu enral Adu than vandhu Indha vaarvin iyyakthai udalil podippeethukondee irukindradu Adu evaar podippeethukondee irukindradu enral The vedilulandha prabhanjasakti Adanudan idu thotrandu Indha sakthin parimaaatram thotrandu nagarundukondee irukindradu Indha unnakilirkkakoodiya andha life force vandhu Eppodu vandhu andha vedilirkkakoodiya andha soon nalailindha sutrapadathilirkkakoodiya andha Prabhanjasaktiin thoondudaluku Adu vandhu Oru Sada nireyl iyyakkamattan nireyl Irukindradu Appalu vandhu enna agindradu enral Indha vaarvin muddivu vaarindha andha disintegration of life The vaarvin Arivu appalu than vaarvu enginra amaypuy andha uruvathin amaypuy andha uruvathin amaypuy Uruvathin Already arivu appalu than thonrehimadu uruvam than arigindradu evoriya andha vaarvaipalu me Irukindradu andha uruvathin sidaiyu appalu eerpadikindradu enral Andha uruvathirkulliirkkakoodiya andha life force Vedilulandha cosmic force the prabhanjasakti Adanodey thoondudaluku appalu idu vandhu oru mandhamana nireyl Adakk response sayyamal appalu irukindradu Appalu vandhu andha uruvathin sidaiyu eerpadikindradu Adu varikkam andha uruvam enbathu vaarvu enbathu andha udalil appalu me irukindradu Indha Sakthi vaarvin sakthi The vaarvin seyalbadhu vandhu evaar thanai velipadutikkolikindradu enral Indha oru parimaaatram enna parimaaatram enram vedilirundu varum thoondudal Andha thoondudaluku Indha onda andha uruvam vadivam Adanin Oru yedursayal response Stimulation response to stimulation Idanmolaaga than indha vaarvu Thanai velipadutikkolikindradu the prabhanjathil Indha Parimaaatram vandhu vevvairu vadivangal Vaarvin thotrangalagekodi vevvairu vadivangal Anayuthikum midagil nadakkindradu Indha Avar nadakkambodhu enna sayenna ovor Vadivangalum thotrangalum enna sayikindradu enral Ovar vadivamam indha vaarvu enginra prabhanjasaktiay Thanul eduthukolikindranay Adheeponru thannilirundhu andha sakthiay velipadutikindranay Indha thodarchyanandha parimaaatram nagarundukondee irukindradu Indha thaavarinathay nam eduthukondam anal Adu vandhu oru vedilirundu varum thodu daluku vandhu Avaygal thanai surukkekolikindranay Adu vandhu oru Narambu unarvai sarundha iyyakkamaga oru yedurchayala namakkut naam unarikindaro nervous reaction Enna nadakkindradu enral Indha thaavarinathil ulla edo onr andha thodu dalai adu vandhu Virumbavathu illai adhanal andha thodu dalilirundhu adu thanai Wilakkikolikindradu ul eduthukolikindradu Idil naam enna unarikindram enthal idilirundhu Bhavan enna kooripadikindara enral Indha thaavarinathinindha seyalbadhu edai kaattikindradu enral Adanodey andha adi unarvathalathin oru unarvanelayin seyalbadhai kaattikindradu enrubhavan koorikindara subconscious sensation Indha plant adaita ninga kaattikindradu enrka kaattikindradu enr Bhavan koorikindara Indha subconscious operations indha adi unarvathalathin seyalbadhu Namakkuludum indha seyalbadha amindhulladu Anal enna vithyasam enral Indha adi unarvathalathin seyalbadhai Naam vandhu namrodiyameerpura thalathirko meerpura manathirko naam Andha seyalbadhu Narandhu mudindha pinnarum kodha Namal adai ninathipathu mail unarukku konduvaramudiyam Adanodey bhaadipu ninra pinnarum pinnarum kodha naam adai Mail unarvathalathirku konduvaramudiyam anal adu thaavarangalalavaru sayyamudiyadu Adhalal irundakkum manidhanakkum sari thaavarinathakkum sari The subconscious level adi unarvathalathil nadakkum seyalbadhu Oreymadriyaga than amindhulladu enrubhavan kooripadikindara Adheeponru Naam sila kariyengalai Consciousaga sayikindaro Andha consciousaga sayyakkoodiya unarvanelayil sayyakkoodiya andha kariyengal Adi unarvanelaykku sentravidikindranay subconscious nireykkusentravidikindranay Sila kariyengalay naam subconsciousaga sayikindram adi unarvathalathilirundhey sayikindram Adainam unu mail unarvathalathirku unarvath conscious Nireykkunnamal konduvara mudiyam Indha subconscious sayyambodhu enna nadakkindradu enral Namrodiyandha energy andha unarvathalathin conscious energy Andha veelyil andha oru pagudil muttrilumaga Aarundhulladu Adu vandhu oru exclusive concentration Adhalal than adanodey andha adu vandhu adanodey conscious Operationsai namal unaramudivadillai Phone session lakoda namrodiy Sundarsar vandhu oru Velaakam kettara ippondu The Car othron number Illa Bhavan sorram Bhavan enna oru udharanam koduthullar enral Oru yedhum veely the yedhum veelya aaramkiru Illa car othron Idalan aaramikambodhu consciousaga aprama adu ellamy oru automatic movementaha amindhavidikindradu Car othambodhu paththo ambrinaa Car kathukkarambo than namrodukondhu consciousaga sayikindaro Alkaapram paththo na once parigichavadi na ellamy automaticavadhu subconsciousaga varikindradu Oru yedathilirundhi inno oru yedathikisalikindram Kodasavela kodarukkarapmatha Carleerukkaramathamavaltanam pa peseetay poro Ananakann vandhu pakkindradu adakk Elanaseynavadhalanandhitrukke endhatthalabre speeda Korikkenavam andhatthal speeda korikidu brake apply pannadu idallan andha seyalgalanandhitukondee irukindranay Idu vandhu subconsciousaga nadakkindradu nam pa petchi paththo Kodarukrapassengers nam kodarukrasaha Payanikalthan nam pa peseetukkaro adu bhatthanandhitrukke idu vandhu subconscious Avanga Sundarsar enna kettanu epadu vandhu consciousamaaro yepri subconsciousavadhu consciousamaaro kettara Adhakey udharanatthan nam eduthukittapri na Carlepoitrukumbo thidiinavathunku kurukavaraanga anachikittapri Oru cyclist kurukavarambo thana nam ennapandaro Nam pa peseetukkala niruthiittu Odhanadi nam brake apply pannaro Avur avur vandhu endhavandha kurukapovaravur kendi vada bhaadipu eerpadae Eerpadae eerpadaamalikindradu than idu oruvi sayidukindaro Idupandaro illa poiteerukaro Samsamay signal red poodranga stop pannaro appa consciousaga aidaro So idu than vandhu subconscious levelindha consciousamaaradu Adheeponru Bhavan sonnudharanati eduthukala Bhavan enna soravapri na yedhumbo than the veely vandhu Subconscious level ellana erdiitrukke andha mindum matrana Andha yenathala nelikthirukkum evoriyamathadhi ellamy subconsciousaga nadavirikindradu solikindara Andha yedhumbo de thidiinandha penla vandhu oru inkutthindupaidudu illa the pen vandhu repairaadchina Odayanamavapenna matraro appa conscious level konduraro So indha conscious then subconscious poodhum sari Indha subconscious levelindha conscious level poodhum sari idu manidhanakkumudiyam thodarchyaaga Idu vandhu oru paramatthanandhitukondee indha Conscious to subconscious subconscious to conscious indha Maathram vandhu manidhanakkum vandhu thodarchyaaga sayyamudiyam I think the sandhayam vandhu Sundarsar kavandhu Velaakamaga urkunen nakaran Ponathara naa sonna avar vandhu convincingara ilanakid tereel
Il sir fine thank you
Ippa idu sonnuna ungalaka I think Indha velaakam sonnuna vandhu kuriyam nakaran ungalakana
True sir yes
Adheeponru indha prajana abdingartha pathtrukkam prajana abdine enna enral andha apprehensive consciousness Oru porulai namakkumunnal vaiyuthu andha porulimayidu muttrilumaga namrodiyagovanathai kuvithal idu than vandhu prajana enbathu The prajana enbathu Enna andha prajana andha andha nireyl enna nadakkindradu enral namrodigovanath kuvithu vandhu Muttrilumaga andha porulimayidho andha nadavadikinmelo aarundhivadikindradu Adanaali enna edutha abdina Namrodiyavudalinoodya matrasayalgal Narambu mandalathinodey matrasayalgal Namrodiyandha unachim manadin the sense find Adanodey matrasayalgal idellamy vandhu Andha seyalbadhal vandhu namrodiyagovanathilirundhu thappivadikindranay Irundhalum andha seyalbadhu narandukondee than irukindradu Adallan vandhu subconscious levelukku poidudu Ananalindha seyyakkoodiya veelyalamathanamavapandhatthal matrana oru gunava urkaro Ninety eight percent of the concentrate ninety eight percent of the work vandhu subconscious ladakhanadakirudu Adu than adanada vandhu indha Ah Een vandhu oru Oru veely vandhu oru iyyakkam vandhu Subconscious nireyl enna nadakkindradu enna karanamna enna karanona Indha concentration of consciousness prajana vandhu Muttrilumaga Unril matrana namayirkambodhu Matravaygal ellamy subconscious levelukku poidudu Adanaal vandhu namakkavandhu subconscious levelukku poodhanala namkakulla activity nadakkaleen solambudiyadu liya Adanada than andha adanada vandhu thaavarianangal Ellamy vandhu subconsciousaga nadakkindradu Adanaal vandhu andhatthal vandhu vaarvin iyyakkam illai enrnam muddivukka vara mudiyadu Adheeponru vandhu samadhanilaya adandavurukkoda Avargalodey andha meerpura manathavandhu muttrilumaga Oru Seyalatra nireyl than arukindram meerpura iyyakkangal ellamy seyalatra nireyl arukum Oru thookanireyl than arupanga Ananavangalodey andha aar manam Eppalu me andha uyyar unarvathalathodu thotapalarukum super conscious tu kupaido Anal matravadiyavangalodey meerpura iyyakkangal ellamy vandhu Complete vandhu oru tharkaliyamaga nirthappattirukum Idu oru udharanati Bhavan solikindara Indha thaavarianangalapurthavarkam Edanala vandhu thaavarianangalaga urkattom ulohangala urkattom Edanala vandhu andha vaarvin iyyakkam subconsciousaga amindhulladu Enrubhavan kooripadigayil avar enna solikindara enral Adumarioru adi unarvathalathil subconscious state vandhu Oru seyaladu nadakkambodhu enna nadakkindradu enral Adanodey unmyana andha knowledge source knowledge source ko Andha seyalakkum Idailavandhu oru gap urundradu Muttrilumaga adu thundikappadikindradu Adanaal than vandhu oru subconscious levelindha nadakkindradu Whereas manidhanakkum enna nadakkindradu enral Manidhanakkum vandhu avandhu subconsciousaga sayyakkoodiyadu vandhu consciousaga pannambodhu Andha Andha the source of knowledge Adanodeyana thodarpu podipikappadikindradu Idal source of knowledge vandhu muttrilumaga thundikappattirukindradu Manidhanakkutabriyapri na Subconsciousaga urkaram vandhu subconsciousaga urkambodhu than the knowledge illa anavana consciousaga vandhu oru sayrap sayyambodhu Indha knowledge source adanodeyana andha thodarpu Meendum podipikappadikindradu idu than vithyasam enrubhavan kooripadikindara Adheeponru manidhanidathil enna kaanappadikindradu enral Indha oru will and desire will and desire enna narthona sangalpam Oru seyalai sayyavandam enrakindra oru aasayalidu ondudal Indha Will and desire ngeradu Ella Ella uyirvarum jana uyirvarum Jeevangal anayuthilime kaanappadikindradu Indha will and desire idarku oppana oru vishyathay naam Atomic level Anu ulanu anukkalil kodha kaanamudikindradu enrubhavan kooripadikindara The will and desire enbathu The undha sangalpam illa urudhi Matram aasayenbathu manidhanidathil maathiram illai Anukkalidam kodha adanool irukindradu enrubhavan koorikindara Indha anukkalidam kodha enna kaanappadikindradu enral attraction and repulsion Idu than kaanappadikindradu idu manidhanidathil evaar kaanappadikindradu enral idiy attraction and repulsion Likeing and dislike Untre virmikindaro matronre virmamalikindaro indha yedurnileyak edanam namil kaanakkoodiya yedurnilegal vandhu Ella leveli irukindradu ella ellaloveliyam irukindradu enrubhavan kooripadikindara Anal naam anukkalidathil kaanappadikindradu naam Oru subconsciousaga irukindradu enrnam ennikindaro Indha yertailam kodha andha will and desire kaanappadikindradu enrakooripadikindara Indha Een indha Ponathara phone session lakoda Madam bonusundrim madam kettanga edanala vandhu indha atomic level Indha yedirederana nireyal kaanappadikindranay edanandha creation podey uruvaakkappadada enna karanam appin kettanga Adakkubhavan enna koorikindara enral enna karanam enral Indha atomic levela kaanakkoodiyadu enna edanala abdina Endhasakti vandhu andha anukkalai uruvaakikindradu andha sakthiidam ivaygal kaanappadikindranay the will and desire Idellamy vandhu endhasakti andha anukkalai uruvaakikindradu andha sakthiidam kaanappadikindradu kaanappadikindranay Adanaal indha atomic leveli kaanappadikindradu adu endhasakti abdine paththo ambrinaa adu than vandhu chitsakti Chitsakti ngeradu enna knowledge force Rida sakthi mirandaayirukindradu adavode amsamayirandaayirukindradu chitsakti Sachchidanandaviilirkkakoodiya andha chitsakti than Anukkalilirkkakoodiya andha sakthiaga velasayikindradu Anghimirandaayirukindradu chitsaktiin knowledge and force enra irukindradu Adha anukkalil kaanappadumbo Yedirederana niregal kaanappadikindradu desire and willin pakkarunam Idu than vandhu valachyadinda animal string kaanappadikindradu manidhanidathilim kaanappadikindradu Enanral adipadail andha chitsakti than anayuthikimay karano Andha chitsaktiinodey amsamayirandamsam Chitsakti knowledge and will Adanaal than adu anayuthinilegalilum anuvalirundhu manidhanvarayandha desire will Attraction and dislike and likes and dislike avaru yedirederanilegal kaanappadikindradu Indha thaavarianangalapaththo abdina Idu vandhu oru adi manathaisarunda oru Narambu narambu mandalathin iyyakkamaga kaanappadikindradu Nervous energyaga kaanappadikindradu Adheeponru idu vandhu oru valan valachyadinda oru vilanginidathilapaththo abdina Undha desire sense onrayadayam enrum enkindra oru unarvai Oru kariyathinirevathram enkindra urudhipadu ivaraaga kaanappadikindradu Manidhanidathil vandhu paththo abdina adu vandhu oru manadin sangalpamagaum Adheeponru manadin oru aribahavum Kaanappadikindradu oru uyandhanireyl kaanappadikindradu Ananadipadail onradha adaita ninga Bhavan kooripadikindara Indha vaarvu enbathu The prabhanjasaktiin Oru alaveedu enrubhavan kooripadikindara it is a scale of universal energy abdingra Indha scale vandhu eppidina adanodey alaveedu eppidi amindhulladu enral Keennelayana unarvattanirey unconscious adalirundhu Unarvullanirey conscious consciousness adu varikkum indha vaarvin andha That is what God asked. This world is a seed. It is seen in the seed. If it is the state of consciousness, it is seen. It is a submental being. A state of consciousness. It is seen by the beings of the universe. It is seen by the beings of the universe. The state of consciousness is seen by the beings of the universe. So, this is the essence. Now, paragraph eighteen. Sir, he read the original text. In this way, we will go to the explanation.
I would like to share a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
I was reading today Aitraye Upanishad.
Yes, sir.
The prajna is mentioned at Palditari. When we are talking about apprehending consciousness. I was not able to understand clearly. But they have given the name Palditari for prajna. That is number one. Number two. See, we are living in a private area where we have got a big garden. Every day, after I get up from sleep. I used to go to do the garden work. Because there is a relation between the plant kingdom and myself. I get refurbished in the night and I am able to spend the time with them. And I was able to see their movements. How they are picking up. I was able to understand. This is what I want to relate at this time.
You are saying very good. The beings of the universe and humans are very similar. But there is no difference. How did they do? How prayers to the beings of the universe responded? They did three ways. First, one group gave prayers. They did not pray, but they were alone. Another group prayed. They prayed for flowers. This is a group. This is the issue. The third group prayed. Let thy will be done. You need to make it happen. In the first group, a flower was born. In the second group, a flower was born. But sometimes, it was a little. But in the third group, let thy will be done. They made the prayers. The plans were very good. Flowers, trees, grass. They performed the experiment. Why? In the first stage, there is no intervention. Divine intervention. A conscious intervention is not there. In the second group, the desire of humans went away. The desire is to see the flowers quickly. There is a watered up seed. There is no spontaneous development. The desire of humans was triggered. It changed the desire. That is why it was a little. After the divine will was removed. The plants were very good. In a YouTube video, this is a Nared's interview. Richard Eggenberg is there. He maintains the gardens of Matri Madhir. I saw this on YouTube.
Very good.
That is why it is good. The plants are exchanged. This is very good. You are saying this is true.
Thank you.
Sir, can we share a personal experience?
Yes, sir.
In our house, a spider lily grew. Alchemy, the flower.
Yes, sir.
A magic. The flower grew for two years. I said, why it is growing? Then I said, what is it? What is it? You grow the flowers, and the flowers share it. Why you want to grow a flower? Then you add water to it. It happened two weeks back. It happened two weeks ago. When I said, it is growing. It is growing two seeds. Each seed is 20. Then four or five seeds. When you take it and put it in the water. What we are saying, the seed responds. I experienced it.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Then another question.
I will share the photo. It was two weeks ago. The seeds were so receptive. When we talk about it. How we responded? How happy everyone was. It is growing so much. It is growing for two years. I said that. I talked about it for two weeks. But the seeds were good. It was a good experience. I would like to share it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. In another way, Nared said. The gardens of Matri Madhir. Many exotic flowers are there. All of them bloom only in one season. Only in one season. The flowers bloom only in that area. Here, completely changed. All seasons bloom. The character is changed. The flowers are changed. The flowers are changed. The seed is changed. The flowers are changed. The gardens of Matri Madhir. He shared it. This is all the truth. Thank you very much for sharing.
Sir, do you see the difference between other trees and service trees?
Yes, sir.
Service tree throughout the year. Every tree is growing. The service tree is there.
Yes, yes, yes.
Other trees have seasons. Do you see this throughout the year? Observe it. If it is good, just share it.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Sir.
Hello.
Sir.
Say, say, say.
Sir, we have a tree. The tree of the divine is growing. When it grows, the seed is exhausted. When it grows, the seeds are exhausted. That is why it is possible to live in a tree. Now, the seeds are exhausted. The seeds are exhausted. That is what God said.
Yes. What is the possibility? That is why all the children of the forest. Can do it in twenty-four hours. Except in exceptional cases. That is why the mother says. The children have lost their mother. Some people are cremated. Some people are buried. Especially when they are cremated. Wait for twenty-four hours.
Oh, sure.
What they say? The life force is there. As the spirit is there. The spirit is exhausted. That is why twenty-four hours before. We need to cremate the body. The spirit is shocked. That is why twenty-four hours wait. This is the reason. The life force is not there. That is why the spirit is there. Isn't it? It is there too. Before the time of the fire. It should be cremated. The MP wrote. The soul shrivel. The soul is... When it is burned. The soul shrivel. That is why twenty-four hours wait. The spirit is exhausted. It is exhausted. The spirit is shocked. This is the reason. Why is it? There is a reason. The life force is there.
Sir.
I may add in this context.
Say, sir, please.
We all know this story. But it is very relevant here. The life of the priest. When he goes to his wife's house. When he went to the village. He said, I am coming. The child of the village is blowing the smoke. Then the priest asked. Where is the child? Have you eaten? Tell us. The child is singing. The child is rebelling. This is a classic example. What God says. It is possible to rebelle. This is proof.
It is true, sir. It is.
Just add, sir.
Say.
In Maylapur, ashes. The child is a note. In Sundhararod. A child born in a year or two years old. It is recorded. Just for information sharing, sir.
Okay, sir.
Hello, sir. May I say something?
Yes, sir, please.
There are two same things, sir. When you talk about flowers. It is seasonal. When you come here. There are no trees. It is raining. Usually, it is like Himalayas. That is what they say.
Oh.
Yes. Sometimes, it is like summer.
Oh, I see, I see.
They say that Africans. They planted a tree in Africa. The tree and the species is called cold climate tree. The species attracted snow. The trees are coming. Then, how long? They cremated. Pavitra. Pavitra was born when he passed away. Three or four days. When you tell Pavitra. He is one of the rarest departures from this material world. He almost totally gone into the mother. Until physical. Three, four days. The tree was attacked. In Ashram. But that is why. He is one of the rarest departure from his body. That is what they say.
Correct. I have read it, sir. When Pavitra was born. He was fully mothered. He was fully absorbed by me. The mother said.
Yes, it is rare.
It is true.
His room is... The mother's room is here. It is in the courtyard. He was like cancer. That is why he was... A little. Half an hour, forty-five minutes. About hundred meters. Suddenly, he came. He never wanted to go to the hospital or anything. So, he is one of the rarest.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. In the plants and animals. We have talked about plants. In Savathri, what is it? Who... The mother is... Who is open to the mother? Humans. The creatures of humans. The mothers are open. That is what I am saying. It is in Book Four. The Book of Birth and Quest. Chapter two, Growth of the Flame. Page number 366. What is it? Twenty-sixty-five. In the line number. What is it? The force in her drew earth's subhuman brutes. Subhuman brutes are the creatures of humans. The creatures of humans. And to her spirits, large and free delight. She joined the ardent-hued magnificent lives of animal and bird and flower and tree. They answered to her with a simple heart. In man, a dim, disturbing somewhat lives. It knows, but turns away from divine light. Preferring the dark ignorance of the fall. There are many. How kids can... Open the mother. Because of their limitations. They cannot match. Whereas, the desire of humans. Open them fully. Whereas, the creatures of humans. It is beautiful in Savathri. Paragraph eighteen. Now, we will go to the first part of the explanation.
Paragraph eighteen, explanation. Life is present in all levels is the conclusion we come to as a logical necessity. It is evident if we observe the surface process of the emergence of life in the light of evolutionary theme. The life in the plant is differently organized than in animal. Yet, it is the same power characterized by birth, growth and death. It is propagated by seed. The death of plant comes by decay of physical harm done to it. It maintains itself by getting nourishments from outside. It maintains itself by getting nourishments from outside depending on light and heat. It has capacity for productiveness and sometimes it does not produce. It has states of sleep and waking. It shows vitality of life and sometimes it has depressed life activity. It passes through infancy to maturity and age. As the plant contains the essence of life force, it becomes the natural food for animal existence. The identity between the animal and the plant becomes closer if we consider it has a nervous system and its responses to stimuli. This is the beginning of submental or purely vital sensations. Yet it remains an intermediary state in evolution between the animal existence and the inanimate matter.
Thank you. Bhavan oria and the Vakyate papo. Apart from all other considerations, this conclusion imposes itself as a logical necessity. If we observe even the surface process of the emergence in the light of the evolutionary theme. It is self evident that life in the plant even if otherwise organized than in the animal. Is yet the same power marked by birth and growth and death. Propagation by the seed, death by decay or malady or violence. Maintenance by enjoying of nourishing elements from without. In the. The vaavu enbadu ellan nilayalilum irikindra endu pona paragraph la patho. Ella that the in all scales. Jada porulilay irundhu manidhan enghindra nilay varikum. Vaavu enkamindu oru thendrara patho number. This da vande oru logical na nambalala think pannamudiyo. Nambalala in the isalapai in the Bhavan is varikka sonadu allan kaitabodhu enna namudi korikiru minral. Nambal oria vaavu kuritha nambal oria sindhanaye muttrilumaha nambalakka marikindra. Sadharma enna nanikro abdina life abdiyabdina. Manushan oria life illa oru vilangin oria life abdita man nanikro. Anan and the vaavu enbadu oru sakthi. Adu vande ellan nilayalilum irikindra. Jada porulilay irundhu manushan varikka irikindra. Endrara oru mukhyamana karthu nambu inge unarikindra. In the enna karathana vande nambu adu eden molemaha idu unarikindra minral. In the vaavu enbadu mellemellem thanai velipaduthi kolikindra. The parinam orachi la mellemellem velipaduthi kolikindra. Adu da namakka in the karthai in the unmay oruvisai kindra. The thaavariyainangal la patho abdina. Vaavu vande oru vilanginathil erikramari irukada, vera maarada erkumada. Anan adhan oria adipaday amshangal patho abdina. Onrahatan erkindra thendu Bhavan kuripadikindra. Ipap oru vilangikko seriyor oru manushanakko serii. Uh enna nadikindra the manushan perakindra, valarikindra, maranam alakindra. Adhee da thaavariyainangalakku nadikindra. The pirappu, vadachi, apparamaareyindu pothal, this nadikindra. Adhee pola and the oru thanai thaavariyainangal. Vidayal molemaha daan um viruthi saithu kolikindra. Adhee ponru and the thaavariyainak thirukundu edadu oru. Physical la vande oru harm, oru thunbam. Nigaramboodhu adu vande oru. Arivay na- arivay uh na- adaihindra. Adhee pola adu vande oru than oru sidaindu pothal. This sidaindu pothal naalum and the thaavariyainangal. Adhan oria arivay nokki selhindra. Adhee ponru adhan oria unavu ellamay vande velili irundhu da na avay perikindra. Wilicham, adhee ponru soriyavili soriyavilicham. This irundhu da and the unavai thiyarikindra. Uh adhee ponru thaavariyainangalum thungum nereel irikindra. Viridikum nereel irikindra. Uh sile samim adhan oria sayalvaadu vande oru. Mihaipatta nilayal sayalpadi kindra. Sile samim adhan oria sayalvaadu oru uh porayinda alavil kana padikindra. Depressed life activity. Uh this all paakambodhu enna Bhavan inge korikindara minral. In the essence of life abdina patho na life noria adipaday saramsam abdina patho abdina. Thaavariyainangal tim serii, manidhanak tim serii. One ra da erkindra. And the thaavariyainangal da vande life force. Appadengira one irukkaranada da nambu thaavaran thaavariyainangalai. Unavaha nam utkolhindra. Putkundu namadriya life force vande pudipithu kolikindra. Enna karana minral and the thaavariyainangal and the life force irikindra. In the in the identity, in the oru orumai padu. Uh thaavariyainangalakku and the vilanginathirukum nereel vande orumai padu vande. Epavu thunirukkamaha thirehindra thendral. In the nervous system, nervous reaction. The narambonatse sambandhamana iyyakangala paakro. Adha paakambodhu inna nambu nerigin nerigipogro andhan oria sayalvaadukalla. Uh sile thaavariyainangal vande nambu thodudalikku vande andhan oria sayalvaadu vera ma thottasurungi paakro. Thottasurungi and the sedila patho abdina thodumbodhu surungi kolikindra. This maray the response to stimuli. Uh this narambamandala thaisarunda oru iyyakamaha kana padikindra. Adhanala andhan oria sayalvaadu and the viranginathin oria sayalvaadai. Mihamothuthu pohinra. Uh in the irundhalam kuudan. This vande oru idaiipatta nilaya kana padikindra. Parinam orachi la vande in the vaavu enghindra thendray. Thaavariyainath thaavariyainathil kana padu. The vilangin oria existence erkum, animal existence erkum. The jada porul in and the adhan oria uh iyyalbirkum. Idai la vande oru idaiipatta nilaya kana padikindra thendu Bhavan kuripadikindra. Other part of explanation pohala.
Padikasa?
Ahh padigay please.
This is how life as a force operates evolving out of matter and ending in mind. If that is the case, we are bound to assume that life is already there in matter itself. It is submerged or latent in the material subconsciousness or unconscious. Sri Aravindova says from where else life can emerge than from matter. This means there is a previous evolution of life in matter if it is a chain in the process of evolution. We cannot think that life is a new creation magically introduced into the nature in an inexplicable manner. If we think so, it must be either a certain. It it must it must be either a creation out of nothing or a result of material operations which do not explain themselves anything or by elements of similar nature in them. Or life might have descended from above from supra physical plane. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. This is Bhavan enna kuripadikindara minral. Vaavu enbadu chada porul da adhakka adhirathada. Thotram vande jada porulilay irundhu da thonthirukka vaidum. Endu korikindra. Adhan oria adharu oru mail uh talaktilay irundhu. Adu kere irakkam kondirundhalum serii. Anan and the olagatil adu velipadumbodhu and the jada porulilay irundhu da andu thanai velipaduthi velipaduthirukka vaidum. Endu Bhavan korikindra. This is precisely what must be expected. If life is a force evolving out of matter and culminating in mind. And if it is that then we are bound to suppose that it is already there in matter itself. Submerged or latent in the material subconsciousness or unconscious. For from where else can it emerge bringra. Uh life vande the parinam orachi la patho.
Scales, different
Much importance. The material energy that aggregates, that is grouping into a cluster, forms and disaggregates, that is separating into parts, is the same power in another grade of itself as life energy, which expresses itself in birth, growth and death. In matter, the life energy does the works of intelligence in the subconscious sleep action. Yet it shows itself as the same power that in another grade attends the status of mind. This power in its very character shows that it contains in itself the powers of mind and life which are not yet delivered. These powers may not be yet in their characteristic organization or process. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, madam, thank you. The material energy that aggregates, forms and disaggregates is the same power in another grade of itself as that life energy, which expresses itself in birth, growth and death, just as by its doing of the works of intelligence in a somnambulist subconscious, it betrays itself as the same power that in that in yet another grade attends the status of mind. There birth, growth and death. That is, the vallachi, after one day, the the maranam. It is this process only. A a a in the ah pair ah ah the the ah jada ah Ah we ah we because one we because ah life ah there that it the at
India, a little example, we will understand, sir.
Madam.
A that because it a once
Yes, sure, madam, correct, you said very correctly. Ah jada ah
Thank you, sir.
India, in the ah ah just as it is, by doing ah as a it it betrays itself, it betrays itself, and it is life energy, we mean.
Ah, life energy is that.
Ah, okay, okay. And the same thing, it's very character shows it contains itself, that was life energy, yeah.
Ah, the other ah the material energy that aggregates, forms and disaggregates is the same power. Same power is life power. In another grade of itself as that life energy, ah, which expresses itself in birth and death, just as as by its doing of the works of intelligence in a somnambulist subconscious, it betrays itself. It it betrays, no, on the um life energy, life energy, ah ah then it then on the here that in the a it is
Okay.
Ah, the next part of explanation, we will read, we have a footnote to give explanation, we will read.
I will read.
Ah, read, madam, read, please.
Okay, madam, you can read.
Okay, thank you. The process of birth, growth and death of life in man is outwardly the same as aggregation, formation and disaggregation of material energy. Yet it is something more than that in the inner process and significance. The psychic being taking up a body has a similar outward process. The soul as a nucleus draws to itself and groups around itself the elements of its mental, vital and physical sheets and their contents. It increases these formulations in life. When the soul leaves the body, it drops and disaggregates these formed elements. It draws back into itself its inner powers till in the next birth it repeats the original process. Thanks.
Thank you. The here ah aggregation, formation, disaggregation. One after in the process, one day where man the even the ensoulment of the body by the psychic being follows. If the occult view of these things is correct, a similar outward process. For the soul as nucleus draws to itself for birth and aggregates the elements of its mental, vital and physical sheets and their contents, increases these formations in life and in its departing, drops and disaggregates again, disaggregates, drawing back into itself its inner powers till in rebirth it repeats the original process. In the material energy, jada and the 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 one aggregates. The one that is formation. After ah the disaggregation. It is jada material energy, jada in the man the it we man after the after ah but man ah ulm a jada set ulm because man psychic being. That is that ah 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 in the pran am in the physical sheets. The sad ah ah and that 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 in the that that all ah that it draws back into itself its inner powers. That 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 in the mool man that and then in the so jada man mere man ah the paragraph nineteen, follow on. Okay, paragraph nineteen.
Sir, one question, sir.
Sir, please.
Actually, this is something different, this is quoting from Upanishad Saran. And it Brahman Indra Parab Deva Man Katri Agas Neer Merup in the Appam Mutt Carap Dear Nith Uday Man in the Avay Asim Asaya All Paj Paj Oh Paj 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 there
Okay. That is, sir, this is, we Bha it in the praj ah one one on multiple that in the praj undivine in the comprehensive consciousness, apprehending consciousness, oh super oh one Bha that the multiple that ah yeah where is the question of world? The the praj praj creator created one statistic ah that after and Even if it is created, it is again divine. That is why they say in the Upanishad, that is also divine. It is not a divine. The oneness of the practice, even in the multiplicity of it, it is not divine. It is the oneness, the divine oneness that is divine. That is why we think that is what God means. In God's meaning, when we see the practice, it is divine. That is what we think. We see the gods of the gods.
Thank you, thank you.
Paragraph nineteen.
Yes.
Life then reveals itself as essentially the same everywhere, from the atom to man. The atom containing the subconscious stuff and movement of being, which are released into consciousness in the animal, with plant life as a midway stage in the evolution. Life is really a universal operation of conscious force, acting subconsciously on and in matter. It is the operation that creates, maintains, destroys, and recreates forms or bodies and attempts by play of nerve force. That is to say, by currents of interchange of stimulating energy to awake conscious sensation in those bodies. In this operation, there are three stages. The lowest is that in which the vibration is still in the sleep of matter, entirely subconscious, so as to seem wholly mechanical. The middle stage is that in which it becomes capable of a response, still submental, but on the verge of what we know as consciousness. The highest is that in which life develops conscious mentality in the form of a mentally perceptible sensation, which in this transition becomes the basis for the development of sense, mind, and intelligence. It is in the middle stage that we catch the idea of life as distinguished from matter and mind. But in reality, it is the same in all the stages and always a middle term between mind and matter, constituent of the later and instinct with the former. It is an operation of conscious force, which is neither the mere formation of substance nor the operation of mind with substance and form as its object of apprehension. It is rather an energizing of conscious being, which is a cause and support of the formation of substance and an intermediate source and support of conscious mental apprehension. Life as this intermediate energizing of conscious being liberates into sensitive action and reaction, a form of the creative force of existence, which was working subconsciously or unconsciously, absorbed in its own substance. It supports and liberates into action the apprehensive consciousness of existence called mind and gives it a dynamic instrumentation so that it can work not only on its own forms, but on forms of life and matter. It connects two and supports as a middle term between them, the mutual commerce of the two, mind and matter. This means of commerce, life provides in the continual currents of her pulsating nerve energy, which carry force of the form as a sensation to modify mind and bring back force of mind as will to modify matter. It is therefore this nerve energy, which we usually mean when we talk of life. It is the prana or life force of the Indian system. But nerve energy is only the form it takes in the animal being. The same pranic energy is present in all forms down to the atom, since everywhere it is the same in essence and everywhere it is the same operation of conscious force, force supporting and modifying the substantial existence of its own forms. Force with sense and mind secretly active, but at first involved in the form and preparing to emerge, then finally emerging from their evolution. This is the whole significance of the omnipresent life that has manifested and inhabits the material universe.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The words of the entire chapter are written in the same line. The last two lines are written. This is the whole significance of the omnipresent life that has manifested and inhabits the material universe. When we see the gods of the gods, they are everywhere. The main thing of the world is that they are everywhere. The omnipresent life, the material universe, the gods of the gods are everywhere. That is the essence of the chapter. The world is animals, plants, animals, or man. They are everywhere. All gods of the gods are omnipresent. They are everywhere. That is why a soul of a god is created. The gods of the gods, the gods of the mind, are created. That is why God asks me what it is. The world is the soul.